Let's call order the study session May 24th, 2022. Donna, we do a roll call, please.
I will. Councilmember vote.
Here.
Councilmember Sherman.
Here.
Councilmember Vitiara.
Here.
Karen Esco.
Here.
Deputy Mayor.
Here.
Councilmember Makeout.
Present.
Councilmember Hughes.
Here.
All right. I'd like to ask for a moment of silence for 30 seconds for the children of Texas and one from chair if the council is in mind. Donna, we keep. Thank you.
And may I ask what was that for?
Our first study item this evening, I'm sorry.
I have no idea what that was.
There was a school shooting in Texas, 18th October again.
Oh, wow.
You're so far.
Okay.
Our first study item this evening is stormwater management plan. City engineer Ken Gill will give a brief introduction and then turn it over to the Mason County Conservation District.
Good evening, council. It's good to see you here all tonight face to face. Fortunately, it's raining, but it's appropriate for the topic. So Sheldon has a Western Washington Phase Two municipal stormwater permit. Quite a mouthful. I think Donna's getting me back from putting all those in there for resolutions. So that's a, that's, that's good. Sheldon's had it since October 2019, and there was about eight different things that Sheldon has to do to comply with that permit. And a lot of my peers really focus on, you know, we gotta do the things that ecology tells us to do to comply, 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 comply is, is beat into you regularly at the meetings. But what Sheldon has done, and I think is really what the intent of the permit is, is the things that you get to do. And one of the things that we get to do is public education and outreach. And Sheldon has been blessed, killed Scotta Grant from Department Ecology to pay for their services for the next four years. It's kind of the life of the permit. And they get to do all the great things in Sheldon. So I'm not going to steal their thunder, but I'm going to introduce Barbara Atkins, just here to my left. Barb is a certified planner. So she works for Mason Conservation District as a special projects manager. So, and is currently working from also on the city of Shelton Green Infrastructure Stormwater Grant. So Barbara previously worked for Mason County as the Community Development Director. So I will turn it over to Barbara.
Thank you. Yes, I am with the Mason Conservation District, and we are implementing the public education and outreach portion of your stormwater plan. My name is Barbara Atkins. I'm Special Programs Manager at the district. I'm here with Jennifer Williams, who is our education outreach coordinator, which means that I am reporting on all the stuff that she is going to actually doing all of her work. We also have AmeriCorps volunteer named Logan, and I can't remember the class name. I'm sorry, but we call him Logan. And AmeriCorps volunteers are vital to what we do because they are volunteer. And it makes it possible for us to do a lot of the outreach activities with the schools that we have been doing. Okay, but. It's not working.
You just tell me the next slide.
We'll do it old school. It'll be fun.
Sure.
Okay, next slide. Okay, so our scope is divided into four sections, and these, and it's done this way because it aligns with what your stormwater permit requires. And it's easier to report this way, and it's easier to roll up all the data that we give you so that it can be turned over to ecology, and it makes sense that you're following the guidelines that they have in the plan. Next slide. So the first one is building general awareness of local water quality. Next slide. Okay, so in this category, if you will, we have conducted public workshops. We've done three. Two of them were open to the general public. One was last December. It was held at, what was it held at? Shelton Timberland Public Library. And then another one was held in January, and that was held via Zoom. And these were put on by both Jen and by Logan. The topics were, of course, sustainability landscaping with native plants, also focusing on pollinators as well as residential stormwater management utilizing native plants. There was also a third workshop that we did out of Public Works, and this was specifically for the W extension master gardeners as part of their new, new member training program. At each one of these workshops that we did, Logan put together and conducted a survey. So before and after the survey, and I have a slide, of course, it's not in the right place, but you'll see it when we get there. I don't know what happened. So he would give out the survey of only five questions, five or six questions before to see, to, to measure your level of knowledge, if you're interested in this sort of thing, and then afterwards to see how much you actually got right. And I'll show you one example of that. Next slide. We also did two field school trips. Now, we do normally do more than just two school field trips, but these two had stormwater elements in them. These are fifth graders from Olympic Middle School. There were two events. There was about 250 kids in each event. And the first one, they went to the Huff and Puff Trail, where they learned about watersheds and pollution utilizing a watershed model. And they also did some vegetation surveys while they were out there. And then the second one, they went to Shelton's Stormwater Facilities on Shelton Creek. They'd learned about stormwater infiltration and did some, some hands-on invasive plant removal, which means you had the plants full in Scotch broom. And they were very happy doing it. So that was good. That was a good experience. Next slide. So the next section is focusing on best management practices to change behavior. Next slide. And if you remember, when we were first talking about the scope, we actually had two BMPs or best management practices that we were looking at. One of them was going to be natural yard care, and one of them was going to be the urban tree planting. Well, we decided to pull back and focus on one because there's this, you know, a certain level of detail and monitoring that goes with whichever one you choose. So we went with the natural yard care. Over the summer, we're going to be collecting more information on this and putting together a campaign to put out to the public to, well, first, we're, we're gathering information to decide what kind of native plants we're going to use. We're going to put the campaign together. We're going to create some sort of packages of like starter kit bundles that people can purchase to take home and start incorporating natural yard care into their regular routines at home. Next slide. And this is the one that's out of order. This is an example of one of the questions that we asked during the workshops. How long should a new plant be watered after installation? You can see what they thought the right answers were before, and then almost all of them remembered it at the end of the workshop to, to get their, to write answer. I'm amazed at how many people after one hour still didn't get the right answer. But I think the, the assumption is, at least for me, that if people get placed on something, that they have a tendency to maybe remember, remember that information more. It didn't stick with me all through college, but I think that, I think that it's a, it's a good practice. So we have a lot more questions, and I have all the, all of the answers and the data that I will turn into Ken when he's ready to report to a college on everything that we did. Okay, next slide. Implement methods to evaluate effectiveness of behavior change efforts, basically monitor whether what we're doing is working. Next slide. So community-based social marketing is something that is specifically in your permit as, as what they want you to use. It can be pretty complicated. I, I've taken some workshops on it so that I could figure out what it meant so that I could do a proper job for the city. Basically, they want you to, to pick a behavior that you want to change, figure out why people aren't doing it, what the benefits are to doing it, how to reduce whatever the barriers are, how you increase what the benefits are, come up with a strategy to put all of that in place, and then monitor whether it's working or not. And this is the level of detail that ecology wants to see as we're going through this process. They want to see what we're, what we're proposing, what we're doing about it, and is it actually working? Or is, is their behavior changing? And we, of course, we selected the natural yard care, so that's what we're going to be monitoring over the next three, four years now. Next slide. So during our annual plant sale, annual native plant sale, we took this past one and used it as an opportunity to start to survey people that were purchasing native plants to figure out what their purchasing habits were, so that we could figure out, like I said, as, as a baseline of what they're doing, why they're doing it, and how we can get in there to try to change it. Where are plants being planted? Most of them are just countywide. The district serves the entire county as well as the city, so it makes sense that we would get that. And you have a small, smaller number of people planting in the city. Why were, why were they being purchased? Now, the, most of the numbers there are pretty even. The largest number, of course, being decorative landscape. So this tells us that people want things that are pretty. So moving forward, whatever plants we want to try to focus people to that are going to help with stormwater management erosion control, those kinds of things that you want to focus on, we need to find the ones that are pretty. Next slide. Um, what would your future interest be? I can't even with my glasses read that from here, but basically I think it was drought control, pest resistance, all the things that the natural yard care program tries to put forward is to put things in your yard that aren't going to require you to use any chemicals that are going to go into the water, that you're not going to have to use extra water watering them. They're going to be drought resistant. You're not going to use pesticides or fertilizer. So now that we know what they're interested in, we can tie that with the other information and start building our plan for how we're going to bundle these plants and how we're going to promote them. And then how the information was received. This was the most shocking for me. Jen does all of our public outreach stuff on social media, and we were really hitting hard, going on Twitter and going on Facebook. And what is it, like eight people even looked at that. The rest of them just go to the website. So we, even though we were blasting as much as we could to try to get your message out there, people using, purchasing native plants, they're not Facebookers. So that's something we need to talk about and maybe talk internally with, with some of your internal staff here. If they have any more ideas on how to reach your citizens, if it's not on Facebook. All right, next slide. Opportunities for stewardship and the decision-making process. Next slide. So we took the urban tree event we were going to originally use as best management practice, and we pulled it down. And that was also ecology's recommendation. Focus on one thing, not two. So we have done the urban tree event out of our Shelton Green Stormwater Infrastructure Grant that we got from ecology. And this is our third and last year doing it because our grant now ends at the end of June. And for the past two years, and this being our third year, we have had a program where just the city of Shelton residents can get a free tree. And you can see these are, these are good sized trees. They're beautiful trees. We have a crew that will help you plant, but they're all in the interest of having people plant the trees and use them again to maintain stormwater on their property. And it's also qualifying under your permit as a stewardship opportunity. So that, that fit together very nicely. Next slide. Other stuff going on. Also under our stormwater grant is the rain garden program, which also ends in June. We've done that. This is our third and final year. We have six Shelton residents in the Mountain View neighborhood who will be receiving rain gardens. Rain gardens along with the National Yard Care and the urban trees are all ecology-accepted conservation practices to manage stormwater. So that will be ending. That has been pretty successful. Next slide. And I have to brag a little on this because this is your, your newest thing, Kalanick Park Community Garden. Thank you, Mark, so much for making this happen. And this is a brand new sign posted out there at Kalanick Park and a picture of our grand opening that was held on our thing. This, this park was paid for partially by Hope Garden Project and partially by a grant we got from the National Association of Conservation Districts, which is pretty exciting because it is a national competition. So we're pretty excited about, about getting this. Next slide. So this garden is open to the public. It is out at Kalanick Park. I'm sure everybody knows where Kalanick Park is, right next to the cemetery, got ball fields and, and everything out there, which makes it a great opportunity because the times that we've been out there, there's a lot of foot traffic of people kind of cutting back and forth through. So that we're hoping now that we are up and running, that we're going to get that foot traffic, and people are going to get more comfortable that we're there and start taking advantage of the gardens. This is, these are a couple of early pictures about pretty much how it looks right now. We've got 15 of those raised beds for the public to use. All you have to do is sign up. There is no charge. People can come in there with a couple of, of ground rules about, you know, taking care of your plots. You can grow just about anything you want out there for people that don't have the space at their homes. And two that are going stricter to the food banks. So there are two grounds out there that we're growing food that is going to go to the food banks. And then we have these two H beds. We're calling them H beds. They're kind of ADA, although we're not calling them ADA because that is like legal definition that we're not going to, we don't claim to, that they are ADA, but they are accessible if you need to sit or stand. And they are shaped, and they should basically, two people could be sharing that one bed there. Next slide. There's also, there's also community food out there. There, there's some smaller beds where planted herbs. There's fruit trees. These are all available. Anyone that goes out there, you're welcome to pick basil or reddino or whatever it is that, that you want. And when the fruit starts coming in, that will also be available to, for people to, to take home with them, whether you have a garden or not. We're not keeping anybody out. Next slide. We've got pollinators along the fence, edibles along the fence, and we built ourselves, which we won't do again because building a shed is really, really hard. But we have a shed out there that we built. So it's going to have seed in it. It's going to have tools. It's going to have stuff, garden stuff in there, and that'll be all locked up. And Mark and the city was gracious enough to have the water extended out there so that folks could connect up and water their gardens. Next slide. Cedar High School, I think Cedar High School had a community project. So this is Mr., I'm sorry. Kurt Garrison. He brought his kids out once or twice a week in the mornings, and they built the fence. So they learned some great skills on putting in fence posts and, and putting the fence out there. And he also built our gate, which is really cute. Turned out, it turned out really nice. Really good to have them out there. I know Hope Garden Project also works for students. So they had their students out there as well, helping build garden beds and helping fill the beds. And I think that they, they also have some gardens out there as well. And next slide. And then the kids put up this quote out there. So that, that's kind of where we, where we are with the stuff that we're doing for your public education and outreach. Everything is continuing to move forward. It won't always be fun stuff. We're going to have to get, get down and make sure that we're doing the proper monitoring, but we are gearing up now for the National Yard Care Campaign. So that's our next thing. Any questions about any of that?
Great presentation. Thank you, Barb.
You're welcome.
A question. Urban trees.
Yes.
How many are available and can they replace shanticleer pear trees?
This is what you can. So we just finished, the trees, the last trees are coming on Thursday, so there aren't anymore available. But, you know, it is, it's been a pretty popular program, so we can find funding in the future. I'd like to extend, you know, extend that out. Of course, there's many family people that would, were very interested as well.
And it wasn't as expensive as you would think. Probably maybe $2,000, $2,000 can run another urban tree event if the city was interested in doing something, something like that again. They're really great, and it's nice to get them in people's yards. If they don't want a rain garden, which is a bit more intrusive, just planting a nice tree is, I mean, everything that people are going to do is going to help you.
Do you like come to people's yards and talk to them about what would be good planting in their yard?
If we are invited out to, to talk about what's going on, yes, we will come out.
Okay, give, give some suggestions on how to do it and what to do.
Yeah, we have, we have Jen, and we also have, like I said, our, our AmeriCorps volunteer.
Okay.
He's got a, he's got a botany background, and we also just hired another person who is also got a botany degree. So, yeah, we have, we have a lot of plant people. Okay, come out and give you advice if you need it.
Okay, thank you.
Do you charge for that?
Yeah.
What about businesses?
No.
Yeah, awesome. Partly tongue in cheek, but are Mason Bees indigenous to Mason County? And we set up Mason Bee Pollinator Stations. Would they, would that be something that you, that we could do?
We, yeah, we have made those with different groups where, I mean, it can be as simple as paper that you put around a pencil and it's tightly, you know, there, and then you just pop it into a, a shelter. Yeah, they're, they're a native bee. They're a need to be, I don't know specifically like, I don't think there's any relation to Mason Bee, Mason County.
I feel logo opportunity.
Any other questions?
Thank you for the partnership.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is ordinance related to camping on private property. City manager Jeff Knight has the information for us. And so the public knows this is a study session. We will take no public comment for this. This will probably end up on a business item later.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, Deputy Mayor, members of council. So this is ordinance 1987 dash 0422, and it was heard at a business meeting in April of this year. And council asked us to bring it back for a study session so we could review all the parts of it and go over it and make, and make sure that what we present and what we draft meets the desires of council for implementation. So to start, it's what it states right up at the beginning is camping overnight on private property not specifically designated for camping, which lacks adequate sanitation facilities and public safety measures creates a danger to the public health, welfare, and safety. And that the council wishes to prohibit overnight camping when such activity creates public nuisance, and that'll be important a little bit later. So what this, what this is directed toward is making sure there's accountability for folks that are camping on private property that perhaps the property owners aren't aware of or that they don't want there. And we want to make sure that people that own property within the city limits are preserving their property rights so that they maintain their property in a way that's safe, and they don't have people camping on the property that they're not wishing to, to do or wishing to have. So just going into the code, I'm not going to read the entire thing, but there's a couple of things I wanted to highlight. So homeless encampments that are not authorized by this chapter or violate the terms of their permits, and we'll get into that criteria here in a minute, are subject to enforcement action. And we list a couple of chapters in here, and I wanted to make sure you knew what those chapters were. Just call them out. The first is chapter eight, and that's health and sanitation. And it's subsection 70, which is identifies a public nuisance. Chapter 17, which is our permit review chapter, and it's subsection 08, which is the enforcement section of that chapter. And then chapter 20, which is the zoning chapter, and 20.56 is the violations section of that chapter. So a temporary homeless encampment host permit shall be required for any temporary homeless encampment in the city. And the temporary homeless encampments are eligible to be permitted as a secondary use in any zone. So what that means is if you have a vacant lot, homeless encampment could not be the primary use. You have to have already permitted use on the property, and then an encampment could be a secondary use. And then we go into criteria, and we've divided this into two sections. So the first section is a facility accommodating not more than six individuals. And it can be permitted for extended families of not greater than 12. So if they're extended family, you can go up to 12, and there are several criteria in here, but a couple of the ones I wanted to highlight. The visual screening from neighboring properties is required as part of this. Any exterior lighting has to be directed downward and not shining outside that property. The host shall provide and enforce within the encampment a written code of conduct. So, and there are several provisions in there. There's no open flames with intense, no trespassing on private property in the surrounding neighborhood, that type of thing. And the host would be required to permit that, to post that, to make it publicly available. And has to comply with all other regulations in the RCWs or the Washington Administrative Code. The big one that I wanted to highlight here is that they are required to provide drinking water connections, solid waste and human waste disposal as part of that encampment. And that the host shall provide access to restroom facilities available 24 hours a day. And then we have a second section for a temporary homeless encampment permit for a facility accommodating not more than 30 people. That one can be permitted for up to seven months with the ability to apply for an extension for an additional seven months. So 14 months total. Everything that I just talked about in section A applies, but there are some additional sections. They have to have a person appointed as a point of contact for the Shelton Police Department. And one, one of those persons must be available on duty at all times. And the managing agency shall not host or allow individuals with active warrants to reside in the encampment. So one of the first steps of that would be a background check through the Shelton Police Department. The encampment cannot be materially detrimental to the public welfare or injures to property or improvements in its vicinity. So it can't cause any material harm to the neighbor, neighbor, neighbors. And the Community and Economic Development Department shall be, shall have the authority to impose additional conditions as part of that approval based on the characteristics of each encampment. And finally, before that larger type encampment goes in, if it is applied for, for up to 30 individuals, there has to be a public meeting and notice to surrounding property owners at least 60 days, I believe, in advance. And all property owners within 300 feet of the affected property have to be notified before that camp goes into effect. There's lots of other language in here, but what we, what we get to is a section of this draft ordinance 20.47080. And that is homeless encampments without a valid permit under this chapter are prohibited, and any entity that allows such a non-permitted encampment on its property, the encampment and its residents are subject to abatement. And it goes into what that abatement might look like. Like any code enforcement piece, we are more interested in helping property owners and helping provide resources to abate that, that nuisance. That's what the next section does is add camping to the nuisance section of our code, chapter eight, 8.70.010. And it says camping or encampments that lack sufficient sanitation facilities or that result in visible dangerous or unsanitary accumulation of camping paraphernalia, abandoned belongings, garbage, and/or human waste are identified as a nuisance. And that's what allows us to address those types of problems. And then the nuisance abatement, it can be up to a misdemeanor. But prior to charging, the person responsible for the nuisance shall be given notice and reasonable opportunity to abate the nuisance. So what we're looking at in order to, to do that is subsection B. 8.70.010 subsection D. That would, uh, offer other remedies which aren't specified, but the city may, uh, enter into a voluntary correction agreement. And, uh, give a reasonable period of time for the violator to abate the nuisance. What this, uh, is, there was concern, uh, in the community when we first had the business meeting about reoccurrences, you know, people keep coming back and back. So a couple of things there. One of them, uh, no trespassing signs posted on the property will help. But the other part is a right of entry order for our police department to go on to private property. Uh, with that signature, we'll make that a bit, that form available on our website. So if there is a concern or a complaint, uh, our police department can go in and see if the property owner has signed one of those, uh, those authorizations. And the police department can go in and take care of it. The other more proactive measure that we've talked about is, uh, crime prevention through environmental design. Uh, sounds scary, but, uh, what it actually is, is, uh, things like. Uh, planting rose bushes in front of your windows. So somebody's not gonna climb through the thorns to, to get into your window. Or limbing trees up to about six feet, which is very similar to what we did. On a library hill trail when police officer drives into the parking lot, they can actually see what's going on up the hill. So it's not about cutting down trees. It's not about any of that. I'm not quite sure where that idea came from. But, uh, what it is, is providing an inhospitable place, uh, for people to set up a camp. And we're happy to offer that service to our police department. Uh, several of our officers are familiar with that concept. Uh, and can make suggestions. So it's intended as a piece to help people, uh, prevent these reoccurrences from happening. And with that, I'm happy to, uh, answer any questions or listen to discussion.
Okay.
I think I saw her end first.
Yeah. Okay, so you said permit for six or no more than twelve?
Right, if they're, if they're family.
So if you can approve of their family.
That's, uh, a great question, but we wanted to provide the opportunity if someone has, you know, grandparents, those types of things. This isn't meant to be punitive, so we wanted to give, uh, as much leeway as we can while still requiring the accountability.
So how long after, uh, places constructed a camp before you can abate?
So like, like anything in the code enforcement realm, it's complaint based. So if there are, uh, larger camps, you know, our code enforcement officers aren't gonna go out, you know, looking at property. They don't have time to do that. They have other things to do. We have the complaint system through our app, uh, which has been functioning really well lately, um, getting those issues addressed. Or if someone fills out a code enforcement form upstairs at the front desk. Uh, or just calls us with an anonymous complaint. We can go check, uh, check those types of things out. I did receive, uh, uh, a complaint about a camp, um. And I can't quite remember where it was. I believe it was off Turner. Uh, and our officers, uh, code enforcement officers and police officers went out there to check that out. Uh, and, uh, absent any other crime being committed. Past us, our officers don't have a right, uh, necessarily to enter that property. And if there's another crime being committed, that's a different story. But, um, uh, this is about giving our, uh, code enforcement officers and our police officers. The tools necessary to address an issue, uh, that exists in the community that I think everybody wants to see addressed.
So, so by permitting these camps, what is the goal for permitting?
I think it's to, uh, uh, find resources, make resources available to people. Uh, so that we can, you know, make sure that people are, uh, sleeping in the park, that type.
Do, do any other? Has there been any data out there about by permitting for camps that cut some, that cut camps down? People don't want to. Let you know where they're camping, so they just won't come and get a permit, but what if they still?
If they still do it and there's a complaint, uh, by a neighbor, we wouldn't go out and address that.
Okay, um. Okay, so I have one more. Mental, material harm versus mental harm. That bothers me. Because, um, material harm would be the big mess, right, that the camps make? Which ends up in mental harm for the community. So you're saying we'll just permit these camps? Well. That's not been go over very well with a lot of citizens in Shelton. Now we're permitting, we're allowing these camps.
Can I kind of jump on that?
Yes.
So I think permitting the camps, there are so many regulations, different things you have to jump through to be able to get a permit for that camp. You have to have. Bathrooms, you have to have water, you have to have so many different things. It's not gonna be like, sure, you can just camp on my land. It's going to make them go through a process. And it's not gonna be super easy to hook up a hose in your backyard. It's not gonna be like that. So I think that. Like with anything, if there is rules and regulations on something. That people have to follow those guidelines. A, it ensures that the right people are doing the right thing and the wrong people can be held accountable. When they're not doing the right thing.
Right, right. I don't. I'm not against the permitting at all. I'm just wondering what our community is gonna say about now we're permitting, we're giving permits.
And if I may, that, uh, part of that is requiring that visual screening. Uh, posting the code of conduct, uh, and for the larger camps, having a contact person, uh, always onsite twenty-four hours a day. That is known to our police department. So if there is an issue. Our police department has a ready point of contact that can address that, that, that piece.
Okay, all right. That's ended my questions. So what, okay.
I was just gonna say, and it's a secondary use, so it's not like just vacant lots. Hey, I've got ten vacant lots, fill them up. Like, it, it's a secondary use, so I have to have a home on there or a business or something else there.
I, I think the ball about that is, we're talking like, you know, if the church has property, the church, the church, it's secondary use, they can have a.
Okay.
Encampment to take care of people and, and what that would do for us. Is when there's people sleeping in the park, we can move them off. Now, there's a faith-based connection to that and the rule to, free court rulings on all that, but. That is an example of where we could. Under the Boise decision, we could actually remove somebody from a public space if there's a safe place for them to go.
Okay.
Right.
All right, so I have a question about, um. With the permitting process, if we, if we do have somebody who goes through the process, gets the permit, does all the right thing. Has this place but has numerous situations that are occurring there, what do we do at that point?
So, uh, if there are, there is a division here. Uh, and I'll see if I can find it. Basically what it says is if you are violating the conditions of the permit, it can be revoked.
Okay.
Immediately.
Cause I know that's gonna be a question they're gonna ask right away.
Yeah, and I'll, I'll try to find that, uh, try to.
It's on page twenty seven of the packet, twenty, there's four seven. Long word.
Twenty.
Twenty point four seven point oh two oh. And then also, uh, it says in here a reasonable period of time.
Mm-hmm.
Are we going to nail that down a little bit more? Cause. Is a reasonable period of time a week? Is it a month, is it a year?
So it's established, uh, in, uh, a lot of case law, a lot of legislation. It's called the reasonableness test and I hear, and you know, I understand that it's vague, but it's what a reasonable person would agree. Uh, is appropriate. So if we talk to ten people and they all said a month is reasonable. Then that would pass the reasonable test. We can add, uh, uh, you know, timeframes in here. Why, why we didn't to begin with is because if a property owner is trying to work with us and make sure that that doesn't happen. And they're doing everything they possibly can. We don't wanna have a timeframe in here where it says, all right, now we have to nail you because. You, you know, you haven't met the timeframe. It gives us a little bit of, um. Uh, if someone's trying to work with us and doing the best they can, uh, we can, you know, work with them and make sure that we don't have to issue a. Uh, fine or anything like that.
Question about, uh. Twenty point, of course, at the, at the beginning of definitions, um, part B, host.
Mm-hmm.
The host name's a property owner and it's slashed out. And then it says local religious organization. I was kind of unsure why we're. Crossing out property owner and making a special exemption for religious organizations.
Usually, uh, religious organizations or affiliated organizations are, uh, those entities that would host a camp of this type. Uh, we can certainly, I remember a, a discussion where, uh, other organizations could do the same. Uh, and we can certainly add that in here. I didn't wanna change this ordinance from what the council saw at the business meeting. Until we had this discussion, but if it's something council.
My point is I wanna keep government and religion separate.
Sure.
Yes, so that's all.
No, and I, I think that, uh, there was that comment made, I believe by Deputy Mayor Schmidt made that at the business meeting. Uh, but I, I didn't wanna change this until council had the discussion if. Something, uh, if council wants to change that to be more broad, we can certainly do that before it comes back to you for consideration of the regular meeting.
And then, um, secondly, uh, the nuisance part way at the end, numbers twelve through fifteen. And I thought that was superfluous for what we're talking about. Um, cause like, you know.
Yeah, well, the, this ordinance already exists. Uh, it's not specifically directed at homeless encampments. We're just adding the, uh, the encampments with the lack, uh, uh, sufficient sanitation to that, so it can be enforced the same way these others.
Okay, yeah. And then one last question, um. With graffiti abatement and nuisance abatement. Is this a possibility that we can have like a. Community volunteer team or a community volunteer in the future, community volunteer coordinator who can help with abatement. Um, specifically for graffiti and for, um, any problems that counts my, my rest.
So, yeah, uh, I think there are groups out there that would be willing to help with that. We've had, uh, the, uh, the senior center. Has volunteered on several occasions just to walk, uh, pick up litter and garbage in the downtown. We've been happy to facilitate that. We will be happy to facilitate anybody that wants to volunteer for the community.
Thank you.
On the, um, permit side, I think it's written very well, so only a real organized. Outfit can probably erect these camps.
Yeah.
And so I like that. I would probably, I thought we talked about cameras. I don't see that in here unless I missed it.
No, again, I have that note, but, uh, until, you know, councils had an opportunity, I wanted to make sure that we had the, the. Uh, will of the council reflected in this. So I do have that note and we can absolutely add that.
And I would also suggest there's an insurance to, uh. Protect the city community that we permit. If there's a murder or something, also protect the neighbors. If there's a neighbor close by and there's a. Fire in that house catches on fire next door and.
Yeah.
You know, I, I probably said maybe that the organization has a two million dollar, uh, all.
Like.
So that, I should just say, on the, on the abatement. This is what kind of bothers me is they, okay, so if they have a no trespassing sign up and they have, um, the entry, they sign the entry paperwork and these people keep coming back. What are we gonna do? To stop it? I mean, how can we s- help a property owner not go through this? Three, four, five times. I mean, the highway three property is, it's completely back and even probably worse than it was when we had it cleaned.
Yeah, but so, and that's one of the reasons why we didn't have the timeframe in there. So if somebody is doing everything they can. You know, we're not gonna hold those people accountable. I mean, it, it. It's the folks that, uh, either ignore, uh, or don't want, um. You don't want the, the city involved in anything that's going on on their private property, which I get. But, uh, you have to be able to enforce, uh, city codes, you know, uh, particularly code enforcement. Which I know is a priority for council. We've been working on, uh, for quite a while. It's for those people, people that are, again, reasonable. Uh, and they're doing everything they can, we will do everything we can to help them. That's, uh, that's what it's, what it's all about. More globally, uh, council passed, uh, the no camping on public property. Which includes several parts a while ago. Until we have the tools and, uh, the capacity at our, uh, jail facility until we can enhance. The capacity at our jail facility, uh, and the shelter, uh, capacity. Under the Boise decision, which I, I think you mentioned a little bit earlier, the basics of that are homelessness is not a crime. Uh, you can't penalize homelessness. What you can do is provide shelter space for those folks. If they refuse to take the shelter space, then you can hold them accountable, uh, at the, the criminal level, at the jail level. Unfortunately, uh, we can spend, you know, a million, two million, three million dollars building a shelter. But if we don't have the capacity to hold people accountable at our jail facilities. That money, uh, is ineffective. So, you know, we need to have the tools available to hold people accountable in order to do this. Unfortunately, the tools are. Really expensive, uh, at the moment. Uh, and I have heard, uh, some promising plans, uh, from our partners in Mason County about how to address that. Uh, and I'm, I'm excited to see, uh, how they'll work and, you know, hopefully they will work and we'll. Do everything we can to help them make that work, uh, if we need to.
Other questions?
If, if you'll indulge me, so, um. For the sake of clarity, if we have a property owner who does not have a permit. Does not want the encampment on their property. Has the trespasser, um, paperwork on file with the city. And they call in to the city and say, I need some help here. What does that process look like for them? Protecting their property rights and what, what does this piece of, of what does this ordinance do in relation to that process?
So this ordinance doesn't address that, that process directly, but there are several, uh, nonprofits, I'm thinking specifically of the United Way. That does their, uh, annual day of caring that is specifically targeted to things like this. Uh, in addition, we have, uh, on highway three, uh, right above highway three across from the yacht club. Several years ago, pre-COVID, let's say that, PC. Uh, we are, uh, uh, we facilitated the clean up, cleanup of that property. Uh, and dragged some things down from that hill that I have no idea how people got them up there. Up at the top. Yeah, there's a giant boat at the top of the hills. So, uh, those types of things, but we will facilitate, uh, the cleanup. Like I said. If people are, are willing to work with us and they're doing everything they can and they need help, we will help. Uh, that's the, that's the idea. The idea is not to punish. Uh, the idea is to help if we can. But we have to have the tools. It's very similar, you know, we have to have the tools to address the problem. If we don't have the tools, then people can just ignore us and say, you know, what are you gonna do? Well, that's how, uh, we end up with some of the things we have now.
And we all know what the tools are.
Mm-hmm.
This is a lifelong, this is a part of their makeup. And to, the tools would be counseling and whatever, and that is very expensive.
Yeah, and those are tools that the city of Shelton, uh, should not be solely.
No.
To build for.
That's right.
You should be partnering and supporting, uh, not being a roadblock, but, uh, but that is support that we need from the state and federal government. That is, it's not something homegrown that we're gonna be able to handle at the moment that we're dealing with right now.
Right.
And I'll, I'll note too that that's one of, uh, the council's major, uh, policy initiatives this year with the legislature, uh, or next year. Is, uh, addressing that, that gap. In, uh, funding for not only mental health, uh, issues for those folks suffering from those problems in our community. Uh, but also, uh, the community itself.
Well, thank, thank you, because I know there's been a lot of conversation in the community about. How this particular ordinance relates to property, um, owner rights and so kind of clarifying. The, the different pieces that we have at play here, I think is really important. Have we had anyone so far, religious organization or otherwise, who has indicated an interest in obtaining a permit or this?
We have, uh, unfortunately, the property that they were looking at, uh, does not have a primary use. Uh, but, uh, we're open to talking with, uh, anybody that is interested in hosting a, uh, uh, a camp like this. Uh, or, you know, I have asked the council to take a look at the timeframes, because the, the larger camp, uh, up to thirty individuals. Is seven months with an opportunity to extend for an additional seven. Uh, now, does that mean, it's not written in here, but does that mean that after fourteen months, uh, assuming the extension is, uh, approved? Uh, that the council has to shut down? And if, or the camp has to shut down, and if it does for how long? So, you know, there's some, there's some ambiguity in the language that if people are trying to do, uh. Uh, trying to do the right thing, that we can work with them. Or if council wants to change that language, uh, we're certainly, uh, uh, open to do that based on, uh, direct, you know, your direction.
And lastly, I just appreciate that we, and we got some feedback on this and incorporating things like the trespasser, um, certification file.
Um certification file, some other pieces. I really appreciate staff trying to be proactive and finding solutions that'll make this a. Not only on paper, something that we're looking at, but something that will work in the field and in the reality that we're facing.
Yep, absolutely.
Just one more comment. I've I've seen mitigation sites with the protective cover and all how it's set up and all, you know. Fire extinguishers and proper toilet treating, toilet uh facilities and um. And I've talked to the coordinators of those sites and they said that once this is, once this is there, it actually helps a lot. If you coordinate it with social services and getting folks moving in the right direction, that's even better. So um just wanted to say that there is hope that these aren't going to be all, you know, crazy mess. But that there are solutions and examples out there that are successful.
And we pulled to draft this ordinance, we pulled from several other cities that uh are running similar programs. Try to learn from their mistakes, uh learn from their successes. Uh and draft the best thing uh we could at the time. Uh but as I said, if there's any suggestions or direction from council, we'd be happy to incorporate it. And I just wanted to make sure as we're moving along here, uh that I I understood what uh what you guys' direction is. Uh add cameras. Is that right? Uh to the requirements. Uh and um.
Insurance.
Insurance uh requirements. I think we can take a look at that and we can talk with our insurers. Uh I'm not sure how that would be affected, but I can update you uh after after I researched that a little bit more.
Remove that.
Uh the religious organization, do we, did we want to make it, that was the third thing, sorry. Uh did we want to make it uh uh any entity secular or otherwise uh or?
Like a community organization.
Any community organization.
And we didn't want to specify just a non-profit either, right?
Okay, we can do that.
Um car camping, do we have anything about that in there?
We do, yeah. So there are uh safe uh safe parking. There's a safe parking provision. Uh and basically what it requires, I'm doing this from memory, because I can't find it in the text right now. You can provide, uh I believe it's up to seven spaces, but the required parking can't get below the minimum. Uh but I can, oh, there it is right there, safe parking events. It's uh twenty point four seven point one hundred. Uh so this chapter does not limit the ability of religious organizations to host safe parking events. Uh in onsite parking lots, provided that. A, uh no less than one space might be devoted to safe parking spots uh per ten onsite spaces. So if you have fifty, you gotta have five uh safe parking spots. Uh restroom facilities must be provided. Uh either within the buildings on the site or through portable facilities. Uh and provision for disposal of waste of recreational vehicles are hosted. Uh so you can't be cousin Eddie out there in the sun. And then uh religious organizations continue to abide by any onsite parking minimum requirement. Uh so if they're required to have thirty-five spaces, they can't go below that. Um and we can change this as well to community organization, so it's in two different spots.
Oh, statement, um we know that when you're homeless. The next step is hoping to get them into affordable housing. But there's no affordable housing. There is, but there's very, very, very little. So are we just holding on to them until they can get on their feet or are we just gonna allow them to keep camping forever?
So the i- the ideal way to address that is. That housing continuum that I think we've all seen. We have the homeless encampment, we have the temporary housing. Uh then we have uh the affordable housing, uh workforce housing, uh which is all kind of the missing middle, kind of that piece of it. And then market rate housing. Uh you're right, unfortunately, we don't have uh any of that yet, although. If we uh find other opportunities uh to provide some of that. Uh perhaps, you know, there are different ways to do it. Uh development agreements is one way. Uh there are, there are several ways we can reduce fees uh for housing developments. If a certain percentage of uh of the housing units, dwelling units are. Uh deep restricted to, you know, fifty percent of the area in town. Uh but there's different ways to do it.
Just to address council members' concern, um we've also decreased the lot size, so we can develop smaller lots for folks can move to. We've also had agreements with uh key odie housing for for tiny houses and we we just have to lower the barriers. For things like that, if you want to continue to provide housing in the future, we could have more villages like that in the future if we have. A concentrated effort to include the other services that are involved and not just warehouse folks at a particular location.
Another question, sorry, I keep coming up. Um will there be a charge for this camping permit? And if so, how much?
Uh so we don't have a charge written there now. Uh we can look, we're in the middle of updating our fee schedule. Uh council will trouble to see that in July to accommodate the new uh fees for animal control and that kind of thing that council has. Or will talk about on the seventh. Uh so we can take a look at that. We, in my view, uh should not make it homeless. Uh for a permit like that, probably.
Cost recovery?
Cost recovery is what we're looking at. Uh the time for the community and economic development department to review it, make sure all the criteria is met. Uh that's how we base all of our fees anyway. So. Uh we would take a look at that and kind of estimate the time and then refine that as we get more permits and find out what it actually is.
I have one quick question. So I know we've been talking about utilizing like churches and community things. Can just individuals do this? Could I do this and just put up, then put it out there? And can I charge people?
Yeah, so and that's that's one of the reasons why we left individuals out. We want to make it uh more organizational, so it's a community organization.
So I can't just throw up the camp and charge people to camp on my properties in town.
We have that.
Little Airbnb downtown with tents.
Unless you're designated camping, recreational area, which we also have an opportunity.
Yeah, so right, so.
But I got a house on it.
So right, well, we have that now. There's a couple of places in the city where uh somebody rents a home from an out-of-town owner. And then is renting spaces on the property that they rent. So. You know, those are the types of things that we're we're attending to address through all these code cleanup issues.
There's also a website called gift camp. Where it's like for cool outdoorsy people who want to camp in the backyards of folks that are in rural areas, it's called gift camp. But I I mean, is that, are we gonna regulate the RBOs?
Uh eventually, uh VRBOs, uh Airbnbs, those types of things, because those. Uh not yet in this community, but in other communities, they tend to really price out uh local folks. Uh so that is definitely on the radar, although not yet.
One bit of follow-up is we're talking about not making this process onerous. I would like to see us consider some sort of like checklist. So if someone is going to be doing this, we know what the code requires, but. Is there something very simple that we can hand them and say, this is what you need to do in order to meet the requirements, so that we're clarifying those expectations upfront?
Absolutely. So uh our community development department uh and public works are going through right now just about every permit and creating those. Uh so uh in order to make it easy for people to to understand and know what the requirements are without having to read this.
So my only wrap-up comment for here is just appreciate you incorporating the feedback. It's good that we kind of pumped the brakes for a minute there. It's kind of went sideways for a second, but. I think the clarity and taking a minute to just talk it, talk it through solved a lot of problems, so. Good, looking forward to seeing this on the business agenda, but then my big question is, so we we've done the public. Uh public right-of-way camping, private camping, the graffiti component. Is there anything additional that we're going to be expecting to see or look at moving forward? Or is this kind of round us out uh on this particular topic?
This rounds us out, although you may see some cleanup ordinances to clean up language that already exists, just to make it more clear. Something very similar to the sign code that we talked about a couple of months ago, where it was nine thousand words and twenty-four pages long. And we uh cut it in half, you know, or less actually, because. You know, making things easy for people to read and understand what's required of them, uh as Councilor Peterson mentioned. You know, if you look at something and I'll just use that sign code as an example, that's nine thousand words, you're not gonna read it. You're just gonna do what you think uh you should be doing and and, you know, you're gonna, you're gonna beg for forgiveness and not ask for permission, right? Make it easy for people to read, make it easy for people to apply. Uh and that's how we all get what uh what we're trying to achieve here.
It'll be interesting to kind of check back in a year or two to see how this is working, you know, we we've had. Lot of folks showing up and a lot of pressure regarding this topic, you know, and we're doing what we can at the municipal level. It's not a whole heck of a lot, unfortunately, but yeah, these are those some steps that we can take to try to. Check these boxes and see, you know, is this gonna solve or support uh a solution in the future. So forward to kind of seeing what this looks like and coming back and discussing more.
I would expect this to come back to you probably early July.
So to be prepared, for us to be prepared and for you and Mark and whomever handles. There are going to be people that are going to come in and they're going to want to permit to have some of these camp on their property. Because there'll be a fee that they're gonna charge those people, money-making. So. Just, you know, we need to be prepared for those those ones.
Yeah, and that that's why we didn't have individuals here. Uh and if we get a complaint about it, our code enforcement officers are ready to address it.
Alright. It's moving on. Thank you. Good to have you on for discussion tonight.
Uh no, no real discussion. I just wanted to put the book in everybody's ear. It's a good time to start thinking about legislative priorities. And uh it's interesting climate right now, so I just have you guys start pondering what are those big projects that we want to go after, so.
Perfect.
Good thing to work on.
Also, we never really got a consensus of wanting to continue having study sessions live or on Zoom. So uh let's take a vote. We would like to have them live.
You're talking council attendance first.
Council meetings, we continue to do them first.
Okay, alright, well. If there's no other items for discussion, this meeting is adjourned at, study session is adjourned at seven oh three PM.